The first quarter.
It's five o'clock at this time of the work session for various city councils for March the first, 2021 to order. We have four. Item three on our agenda are items for review and discussion. Item three A is the office of the city manager. Item three A one is to consider authorizing Langston Road RSDS service area and stormwater connection charge. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a recommendation from the administration as how to pay for at least a portion of the Langston Road regional stormwater retention facility. On the table are two quick reference maps you can take a look at, plus we also have a few PowerPoints. This is the first one that just gives you an idea of where we are with the project. The preliminary engineering report is done, survey is complete, geotechnical investigation is complete, the acquisition is underway, and sixty percent of the graded integration plan is under review. This just is a recap for you about the proposed retention pond, which is also, you can see the snuggle color there on the map you have right in front of you. This gives you an idea about the land acquisition map, the properties that are needed to be acquired directly for the pond or what we might need for temporary construction easements. Underneath this proposal, the city will be paying, from the general fund, will be paying for the purchase of the property itself, so we don't have any delays. This gives you an idea about the development statistics relative to that and opinion of the probable cost. When you go to there, the estimated cost for this project is probably about $700,000, $750,000. This is also a layout that shows you the properties contributing to the watershed and the upstream flow. So, right what we have there, what we are recommending to you is that you authorize the establishment of that basin and have a stormwater connection charge associated with it. We are estimating that that cost would be probably about $350 per ERU, which means $350 per single family, batch, and house. Now, when you have commercial, they have different ERU ratings, so that goes back to what they contribute on the stormwater. Happy to answer any questions?
How many acres of land?
Uh, there's about 320 acres.
There were a lot of sales thrown around.
Yes, that's right.
Questions, council members, for up to this proposal from the administration?
Yeah, then you said it was a connection fee right, is that a one-time period, is it going to be recurring?
No, one-time charge from the builder when they pull the permit. Now, of course, each of the residents, as they come in, will have to pay the annual stormwater charge that everybody else has to pay. But this connection would only be one-time charge. You may remember, you may remember we have something similar out there now for water sewer drainage for that construction.
Hey. Any chances it could be a park? That looks like it's a.
So you need concurrence unless the city is willing to do this to move forward?
Yes, if the council concurs, then at your next meeting, you'll have a resolution coming to you or clearly defined district, but you can see it laid out there, and then also what the re-charge.
And in doing this, does this conclude the builders having to put down a stormwater retention pond in the subdivision itself?
Yes.
So, they would incur that cost, but they're not going to incur that cost, so they're mining part of the figure.
That's correct. This goes back to a plan that was originally approved by, the concept plan originally approved by the council probably about ten years ago or so, about instead of all these subdivisions having their own little individual stormwater facilities, that you have larger regional ones that take care of the watershed.
And this is beside the, the new development by Langston School? What, I mean, where is Langston School?
This is Langston's office.
No, this is Langston Road, Lake Forest subdivision. Uh, Dr. Kinsley's new office, if you're familiar with that, that's right in that region. Yeah, Langston School is a lot longer over in the west.
I'm sorry, I thought that was where it was.
That's the new fireplace right there. Yes, that's right. Is a fireplace in the cloud?
If you go over your hand here.
Other questions, council? Does Mrs. Gilmore have your concurrence to move forward with fair resolution to establish stormwater people or connection people?
Yes.
At this time, let's go to. Ms. Gilmore, you have consensus to move forward with a forward to the resolution at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Item three A two is to consider adjustments of residential parking issues. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a memo that goes back to your request from December fourteenth about checking to see what other cities our size or our models are doing relative to the issue of residential street parking. I trust, Mayor and council are familiar with this discussion that we had. Contacted them, as you can see, that it is a problem in all of the cities that we contacted who responded. The options that have been used or tried are to encourage subdivision homeowner associations to restrict parking. You may remember, we've talked about that here. Install no parking signs to homeowner associations in troublesome areas. Aggressively enforce no parking by fire hydrants blocking intersections, et cetera. Increase the minimum driveway length, you may remember, we have done that for conservation subdivision. And then change street to one-way or parking on one side. The primary thing, as a result from all these cities, is they all have an issue with it and they all have basically let it go. You know, any of these more serious restrictions that they have tried to put on have been met with persistent resistance and so consequently, the councils have backed off on that. Also provided, I believe, for you a copy of a survey that was done by the city to look so you can get some idea about some of the other issues that they found in their survey. What we recommend to council, you know, for this is number one, that residential streets remain as is relative to parking unless there is a successful petition to change from the affected residents. And of course, as far as the administration is concerned, a successful petition would be similar to what's required for the installation of traffic calming devices. Second recommendation would be that homeowners would need to enforce neighborhood covenants. You may remember, we have talked about that, some of the neighborhoods have this. I don't think it's beneficial for folks coming to or requesting police to come and take any action when it's in the neighborhood covenants. And then the final would be that any residential street that qualifies as a minor or major collector will allow parking on one side only unless there is currently sufficient space for parking. We have a couple of slides that can show you here that gives you an example. Take a look at the screening of major street, major collectors in the city. And then this is minor collectors. Collector streets are determined by policy you already have established, which is the number of vehicles, you know, daily using the street. I would not anticipate we would go out and automatically take any action on any of this parking stuff unless there is an issue that comes up. Most of our major collectors, and a good number are minor collectors, are okay, so they would not require any parking restrictions. Some of the newer subdivisions, particularly as they develop, that may be an issue and we would come in and advise you each time when we thought something might need to be done with it. And then you can make a final determination whether to proceed or not. Be happy to answer any questions?
Questions, council members?
I'm a little bit surprised not to see legacy right on there because it goes, you know, from endermost all the way back out to the fireplace.
We will have to run a traffic count, get a determination on that. Particularly some of these newer subdivisions, we don't know because we haven't run the numbers particularly as they develop. You try to stay away from tracking numbers when they have a lot of construction in the neighborhood because a lot of that we're assuming to be one-time only. When it looks like a particular phase or whatever has reached mostly developed, we'll go back and run the numbers count. Or we will run a numbers count if the street winds up having other subdivisions or other phases coming line and going in and connecting up.
Lots of parking on both sides of the street. Now, I've stated that several times, that it's a dangerous, place to drive through.
That's right, and if you agree with that and the street qualifies as like a minor collector, then we would come in and choose one side or the other for parking. But as I mentioned earlier, the primary thing that all these cities have found is that none of the residents like any of those parking restrictions, no matter what. And we think it's important to have a good basis on why.
Other question? What action do you need from us, Mr. Gilmore?
If council concurs with this, we'll act accordingly.
Council members are agreeing to consider the recommendations from the administration?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence from the council to move forward?
Thank you.
Three A three is hydrant maintenance. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you have at your board pack a memo from myself and an accompanying proposal from the television pertaining to hydrant maintenance here in the city. As you are aware, the city has a very expensive and growing network of fire hydrants across the city, approximately 1,300 fire hydrants. With having such an extensive network, there are a lot of requirements in regards to maintenance of those hydrants, making sure they're working, making sure the flows are there, making sure there's a clear zone around them for identification, emergency purposes, that type of thing. And it can be rather time-consuming. Up to this point in time, fire has been charged with maintaining the hydrants and they've done an admirable job. And then, you know, it's as time permits type situation where when they have time, they go out, they can do this type of thing. But as you're aware, with their increasing call volumes, it's become increasingly difficult for them to get out and do their required maintenance on those hydrants on a regular basis. So with that being said, the city needs to look towards a more concerted, focused effort regarding the maintenance of our hydrants. And with the proposal before you, we believe that we would be able to adhere to best practices as a city associated with hydrant maintenance. And we also address some concerns and recommendations that were brought up in a very recent review from IASO here in the city. Generally speaking, what we would like to work towards, and you can see in representative proposal, is locating and GIS collecting multiple locations of all the hydrants in the city. And this is a very difficult effort to get out there, identify them, upload a bunch of information pertaining to the hydrants, where they are, what kind of flows they have, all that type of stuff, to a central database that can be utilized. You know, just for us having for flush purposes, you know, making sure that all of our infrastructure is in some sort of database where we can go, refer to things if necessary. But also when our emergency services are responding to something, they can type in the GIS location for these hydrants and hopefully ascertain the closest hydrant, that type of thing, in an emergency situation. For each hydrant going in, do a thorough assessment of that hydrant, where the flow is, the position operating correctly, is it the type of hydrant that we need? All that type of thing, do the maintenance, decreasing it, testing it, all that type of stuff. And some of this testing that's involved with hydrant maintenance does require some, I think, you know, rather complicated hydrologic models, that type of thing, in regards to flows, something that may be out of the wheelhouse of our fire department. So, working towards a system that is robust and then also happens on a regular recurring basis to make sure that our emergency infrastructure is working the way it should. You can see in the proposal, kind of step-by-step scope of work associated with the proposal, staff is recommending to move forward with television. You can see the cost for that is $109,000. And what that will do is get us to where we need to be, that will not be a ongoing expense. Certainly, we revisit after the completion of the scope of work in regards to ongoing maintenance, but this is getting us to where we need to be with all the GIS location and flush the data, all that type of stuff. We are recommending the two-year basin to be paid for in the water sewage revenue fund. And in regards to working with the television, we think that would be an advantageous way to go for the city for a number of reasons. First, the television is essentially a subsidiary of ESG, as we're all aware. ESG currently operates and maintains all of our water infrastructure. The hydrants are a component of the water infrastructure, so we think that would be kind of a natural progression in that relationship with ESG. Also too, ESG is our consulting engineer in collecting our GIS information and putting together a comprehensive GIS database of all of our infrastructure. So, currently working on that project, the GIS location and creation of that database being such an important component of this, again, we think it makes sense to continue that relationship with ESG and incorporate it into this project as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I have. We also have with us, obviously, tonight, our fire chief and our fire marshal, who may have some more information in regards to some of the technical aspects associated with hydrant maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Council members, questions relative to this proposal?
Would the maintenance out of the water and sewer plant have any impact on fees scheduled for that? In other words, would fees have to go up since this is the high cost? Yay, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's also why it's recommended to be done over two years.
Does the $109,000 include any correction of anything they may find or is it purely assessment and testing?
There would be minor corrections that could be made, they go out, there's small components or something like that, that need to be replaced or like that. But, you know, extensive, say for instance, if they could actually replace a fire hydrant, we would have to figure that out.
Any other questions?
I think it's extremely important, we have been dealing with this for, I don't know how many years we have served on the council, trying to figure out a way to maintain them properly and determine that they're all working properly. The one thing we don't want to do is roll our department up to a house fire or a business fire and the hydrant be out of service. And I notice we have one bag somewhere here on Main Street or something up in that area. Where they find one out of service, then they're going to bag it. So this will, this will take a lot of that pressure off. I think that it's very important, personally, I think it's important to involve.
Council members, your concurrence on this to move forward?
I'm just pleased they're working with ESG. I'm glad there's some similar area or something, I hope ESG can, I'm glad to see it's working.
We're going to be getting out for it. Would this need to vote?
No.
If there's current, we find since it's tied in. We have concurrence on the council to move forward, Mr. Smith. Maybe a nice presentation, but I see that it's working.
Thank you.
Item three B is economic development office. Three B one is considered pedestrian lighting for hotel and hotel areas. Ms. Harden?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me? Okay.
Is it on?
Yeah, it is, okay. Tonight we're exploring options for pedestrian lighting. As we see our city continuing its growth, we'll see additional public investment come alongside private investment and there is a need for more sidewalks and lighting infrastructure. So tonight, we have three different pedestrian lighting options to look at at Hampton Court. And these are more modern light designs that are designed to fit in with the new construction that we're seeing, the Avon Hotel and another hotel building. And we do foresee a future typically restaurant development at Hampton Court as well. So this is the Marada and this is a parking lot that they sent an example of and some roadway as well. This is the first option, this is another example of it. And then this is installed at a walkway on a waterway in Huntington Beach, California. Enterprise is the second option. You can do different colors, so if you guys like the chrome or the black, some of these you can do different colors on. And the company that, the distributor that provided us this, said they need to do a better job of putting some phonos, so this is the best that they could give us on these different options. But this one, they put the light on both sides and this is at a car dealership and that's the Enterprise post top. And then the last one's the lifestyle. And so you can see two different colors. And then this is installed at a, it's like a government campus type building. You can also see it on a walkway here, this is a town in Missouri. And then this is that same post, but a different color, and this is a government building. The company said that typically, these are about 75 to 100 feet apart. So some of these that you see closer together, that's just because of the nature of those facilities. But for pedestrian sidewalks, we'd see them about 75 to 100 feet, just depending on what the need was. So do you all have a preference?
The last one that's on the poll, is that the same light that the two lights that we have down downtown?
No, this is not. We did not opt to go with what we have downtown because downtown is more historic. And so the light posts downtown have more of that historic feel that goes with the character of historic buildings. So the ones that we provided is from what you're seeing in more modern growing areas with newer construction and new developments.
Council members, these are just alternatives we can look at. It really is purpose, as I understand it, is to get us to thinking about what kind of lighting system do we want throughout our hotel and motel and commercial areas. So, we're not at a point that you have to make a decision this evening if you're not ready for that. But as you look at other cities and things like that that may have lighting and you would be interested, we would ask you to bring that forward to us as well. So what are your thoughts about what is presented here?
I think this is a nice, how much area does it cover?
They're all LEDs, that's what you're asking.
How much coverage does it, okay, now is it 20 feet, 10 feet? I'm just curious because they have so many more than that. This street right here, I just was wondering.
Typically for pedestrian lighting, the company said that they're about 75 feet apart. Our city engineers in the downtown ones are about 60 feet apart and you can go farther. So it depends, you know, how the sidewalks are designed, there's a lot of curvatures, you might have more lights. So typically, you know, the designers, the engineers, would keep that place in as they design the sidewalk to see where the best fit for the lights.
Other questions, council?
Are you guys, do you want to study this a little more to get some additional options?
I think we need it.
Because your work is a rock, they have a decision from the council as far as designing.
For your determination, that's for about 30, maybe 60 days. The, currently, the city's engineer is working on the survey and the layout design for the sidewalk on Hampton Court, which runs between Sam, excuse me, Sam Dunn and James Street where the Avon Hotel is. So there's not an immediate need for it, but within that timeframe.
Do we know how many fixtures we need? No, we don't, I don't think so, that has been calculated. It depends on which ones we pick. That'll be the next step, if we can settle on a design feature that we like and we'll start looking at costs.
The primary thing I think we're interested in tonight is number one, make sure you're The primary thing I think we're interested in tonight is number one, you may be all aware of this. And number two, that you basically concur that, as Ashley mentioned, the historic lights we use in the downtown would be for the downtown but not repeated other places around the city, which I think is important. Identification and that type of stuff. If you'd like to have those kind of lights citywide, that's fine, you know, and then we'll just receive a court. But I think the unique character of our downtown fits with the lights that the DDA had picked down there. And I would recommend that we use, whether it's one of these or something else, some other style to go in the commercial areas around the city.
Do you think those business owners in this area would have their opinion on certain light? Or would they be capable to ask their opinions, they may know more than we do or I do?
Yeah, we definitely do that. Their primary thing is they want to have sidewalks and pedestrian ones. I don't think, at least so far, they haven't expressed anything to you with type or anything. But we'll start again with them and see what they would recommend.
Comments or thoughts, council? Well, start thinking about it as to, you know, looking at various places on the internet of different types of lighting packages that we see around the state, you know, in the southeast. And so if there's something that you really like, then we'll have it investigated before the 60, 30 to 60 days are up. We appreciate that, we will get back with you. We know the time is of the essence. 3C is the Office of the City Attorney. 3C1 is the Nut League Relative Legislation Providing Home Delivery of Unbroken Packaging, Council Hall. I'm glad they send it unbroken.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is just an update. This is from a House bill that was passed last legislative session, just to make you aware that effective August of 2020, unless a local government expressly prohibits it, then state law permits any packaged goods retailer to deliver malt beverages and wine in unbroken packages within your local jurisdiction. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I think our licensing department has received at least one phone call asking, did we have an ordinance in place prohibiting this? And we do not. But that prompted us just to bring it to your attention in case it was something we wanted to consider expressly prohibiting within our local jurisdiction. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, councilmen? So the action we would have to take is act to prohibit it. We don't take any action whatsoever, it is allowed by state law.
That's correct.
And as I understand, we need, under the emergency declaration, we practiced this by, most of our food vendors were taking malt beverages and wine with food.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if the state law has a age requirement for those that are transporting?
It does. There's a long list of requirements for people, businesses that have this type of license have to actually get through a certification process and be certified to be able to deliver it. And they specify a certain age of the delivery time as well.
Probably 21, at least you think?
Yes, sir, I think that's correct. It's in the, it's in here. But yes, delivery shall be made by, if it's a third party, well, anyone, but they have to be at least 21 years of age.
Other questions? So does the council desire to take any action on this or let the state law go away? We will, let the state law go away on this and will there be requirements for them to have a license with us as well or is it covered under their current city wine and beer license?
That is up to council. If we wish to create an initial license, we can do so, but it's not required. They would be permitted under state law just to deliver as long as they met statutory requirements that are set up on state.
The administration's recommendation is no, there would not be any additional charges. It would just be one of the options you would have if you meet the criteria. Unless, like Brooke said, you won't want to do something.
Council members, are you okay with the administration's recommendation? Thank you very much for by the state laws. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item 4 is council member items, Mr. Clonan Grayson.
I have a question. When will we start rolling out the information to our citizens that you look after April 24th, you will come to dial 10 numbers instead of the seven digits?
I'm not aware of what.
Okay, well, that's going to be mandatory 10-digit dialing coming up in the future. And the 988 that we use for our city will go to a number like Fire Prevention or something where you just dial three numbers. So you might want to look into that and see because it's coming up. And I don't think, I think initially you can dial the seven, the seven digits with no problem. But after, starting October 24th, it's mandatory that you dial the full 10. And the 988 will go away effective 3D, July 16th, 2022. It will go to suicide prevention and mental health crisis line, the 988 that we use now for the city.
Okay, you have more second notes? So we'll look into that, thank you for making this aware.
That's it. I'll hold tomorrow.
Okay, Dr. Auburn?
Two double open tuckerooms, that's the last one in my house. Tuckeroom is given play, they've been doing some digging there, working on that fire plug and every time they catch it, it'll happen.
I'll hold him up. We'll have that written, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mayor President? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, are you kind of, would you like to bring the forward's decision?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We have been approached by the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce requesting some of the services that we had provide to them previously when they were located downtown. I think you all are aware of the fact that the Chamber felt that it would be more advantageous for them with the COVID situation to move up to the fairgrounds. However, when they made that move, they fell into the category of where they would have to pay for these type of services that we provided, excuse them, at no expense when they were using city streets in downtown. The first item that they're requesting for is the state, states be set up. It's our understanding that the fairgrounds does not have the size states that they need. Second that they're requesting is the fire department go and pump up their dogs, swimming, jumping, tank. And the third request that they had was for police security services out of the fairgrounds. And then their final request that they were asking for is a tram service that would run between the fairgrounds and downtown. The, due to the unique set of circumstances with COVID, the administration is recommending that the city, or you authorize, you know, the city to waive the charges for the state setup, fire department doing the pumping and the police. The administration is also recommending to you not to provide tram service. Or if they still want to have the tram service, then they have to pay for that. The reason we're recommending this is that we have tried on at least three other occasions to run tram service for different events from the fairgrounds to the downtown. And the participation in that has been very core. And it's, the administration's believe that people's patterns and habits won't change. And that most of the folks who are going out for the Dogwood Festival will go out to the Dogwood Festival. And if they want to come downtown, they'll get in their vehicle and come downtown. But most of the time they would not be interested in going to the fairgrounds and taking a tram, coming back downtown and having to wait for the tram to go back. So that one request, we recommend to you that you would not provide it at no cost. And if the Chamber was interested in pursuing it, then they would have to pay whatever those operating costs are. Those operating costs would be whatever the time cost is for the city employee who does the driving. Or city employees, you know, to make two or three of them over the timeframe. The other items that they're requesting for, the administration is recommending that council agree to waive the fee charges for this year.
Council members, questions for the board? Is this one dollar custom or you call up? Sorry, I would think that from my perspective, we're doing this because of pandemic. And this would be for this year only and then they continue to operate out there at Fairgrounds, but there's something we'll have to consider that.
That's definitely the administration's position. Because Fairgrounds does have their own type of security apparatus. It is a setting that, I mean, it's not private, but it's not sitting, so you're not having any public streets involved. And I would be concerned by other groups coming to you asking for those same type of services and everything when they have a event held.
I think given the extreme nature of pandemic, I think it's the right thing to do to still waive the fees in this case, excluding the tram service.
And especially since the Chamber is a community partner and, you know, we have a partner, you have common goals. And their common goal in ours is to enhance the quality of life in our town. And I think providing the festival is enhancing the quality of life. It's giving people a fun weekend outside when they need it. So I would fully endorse them getting from us, but they wouldn't come downtown. And honestly, I think your request for the tram was just to maybe help people downtown feel like they hadn't ignored their businesses. And so that won't impact the happening of the festival at all.
Any other questions or comments? So do we have consensus to approve the administration's recommendation to cover the cost of police security as well as the fire department selling the pool and us providing the station? You said it's the one town?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman?
Tell me one other move. My understanding on why they moved was two issues. The first one was they wanted to have a bigger footprint area to allow for the social distancing of the number of vendors that they are hoping or planning is now to have participate in the event. The second item that they were concerned about would be the city, depending, because of the lead times for planning, the city's policy relative to COVID numbers and hospitalizations, that you would not be comfortable approving the use of the city streets for their event when they had it downtown. And if they can't use streets, it just doesn't work for them to be downtown at all. And that was a decision that they had to make probably at least a month ago, I think. You know, based on whatever the circumstances are. You may remember a similar type of deal is that Peaches the Beaches, you know, came in and talked about having their event. That was going to be in early March, I believe. And at the time, when they were making their application, you said, yes, you can still have it, but you can't use any of the city streets. You can't use any of the city parking lot, remember all that type of stuff. Now they elected to postpone their event. But the Chamber, you know, felt the need to seek an alternative and they were able to make an arrangement with the fairgrounds.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, you have the currents to move forward with the Chamber request as well. Mr. Smith, anything else for us this evening?
It's Mayor and Council, I have one item. As you are aware, I hope the city dispatch, we can actually transition to, transition from G Suites to Office 365 and migrated all the associated content, emails, calendars, contacts, that type of thing. Obviously this would impact for the city council member, mayor, mayor person, accounts. I hope we didn't have any issues. The process seems to have gone smoothly at this point in time, been a few bumps on the road. A couple of days we're still working to go on that. But it seemed to be successful at this point in time. If you have any super technical questions, if you're requiring assistance or anything, you can contact Mr. Gilmore. You can just give me a call, send me an email or contact. Ms. Clark over there has been very instrumental in putting this together.
Very iconic.
But we think this could be very good. The preliminary feedback one has been very positive. So thank you all for supporting this.
Anything else? Mr. Gilmore, I'm sorry, I knew it would test you, do you have anything else?
No, thanks, Mike.
I want to make sure that I moved it pretty clear. Ms. Moody, anything for us this evening? Ms. King, anything for us this evening?
Yes, sir, just a gentleman, we did the audit last Thursday. Fire department should be delivering to us sometime this week. I was like, have them, I'm going to put them in your boxes so you have all your shopping to review. And we'll be making plans to try and, Mr. Edwards, here, at the next council meeting, we'll session to present it.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mayor, I do have two items. Okay, Mayor and Council, thank you. First item is a question for you all. I've been approached a couple of times by an engineer asking about allowing all street parking or private parking that has to back into a street to use, sort of like a downtown type parking layout. This particular property is Men's Court, which is right across the street from City Hall. And Men's Court is this little cul-de-sac right here. This is Washington Street, right in front of City Hall, right here. The State Farm agent is located right here for your orientation. In this particular case, I've talked to the gentlemen, the city ordinance, the land management ordinance does not allow parking to back out into the street or use the street from where they were. So he would need a variance from that section of the ordinance. But also I think since this, since Men's Court is a city street, they need to have concurrence from council to be able to do that as well. In this particular case, I would say that this is, partly because this is in the downtown overlay district, the applicants wanting to do something more in the character of downtown. Because Men's Court is a short street and has very limited traffic on it at this point, I would say this appears to be an appropriate area to, if we're going to allow it, to allow this type of activity. I do have some concerns on this particular layout, that the parking spaces here at the front need to be moved back some so that people pulling off of Washington Street don't stop in Washington Street waiting for someone backing out. And I think if that's, if we move those around and get about 30 or 40 feet for a car to pull off of Washington and on to Men's Court, that would be an appropriate situation here. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if you have any concerns or are comfortable with. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if you have any concerns or comfortable with allowing this type of activity on Men's Court.
Councilmember, what are your thoughts?
What is the activity?
The activity is cars backing into a public street, coming to get in and out of the parking spaces.
Is this a new business that we've got here?
Yes, this is a, I don't know what the exact business is. He's just given me this rendering of a speculative building at this point, as far as I know. But yeah, there would be a building, the way he's shown it here, a building would be laid, set up adjacent to Washington Street. There would be off-street parking at the rear and then a few parking spaces right at the front door that would, that would require the use of Men's Court for entering and exiting those spaces.
Would this set any kind of precedent that would come back upon us potentially?
I think that as long as you're, are looking at the actual street that the activity is taking place on and the traffic counts, probably not. I think that in this case, the only other properties on Men's Court, there are these three which would be associated with this particular development. You've got at the back corner here, the service and employee access for the Home General. And then on the front corner is the, the loan facility, which also has access onto, directly onto Washington Street. So I think that the traffic activity and the length of Men's Court is going to be relatively problematic, unproblematic to allow this type of use. So as long as you look at each, if it comes up again, as long as you look at each street, your traffic patterns, and determine that there's not a safety issue from that perspective, then I think that you're okay.
That's one of my concerns, that it's gonna be a safety problem. I mean, like you said, once you back out onto the main door of there, Washington, which it is, and, you know, people coming down the street, a lot of times, if they're not paying attention, they're gonna have to slow down and stop. You know, I mean, it'd be nice if they could, if they could go up in there, they need to fix it so that instead of them backing out into it, they need to just come into it. You know, I mean, you know, that's the only complaint I would have, that with the main street in Washington, I feel that we really don't need people to start backing back into it, especially when most people start coming, a lot of people be coming down, down that street, you know what I mean?
So the parking itself would not back into Washington Street. My only concern is that people wanting to use those spaces, whether or not they would stop in Washington Street waiting for someone to back out. And so that's why I think that if we push those, those spaces further away from Washington, it allows people to pull onto Men's Court, out of the traffic on Washington Street to wait for a space to.
Well, I agree with that. As long as, like I said, one, as long as we have a safety way, you know what I mean? We really don't need more accidents right there, you know what I mean? And so if that would be possible, then I would have a problem with it.
Councilmember?
I'm always gonna see it before I come here.
Okay.
Mr. Hart, want to go see it before you.
Okay, that's fine. And this is, this has not been submitted as an actual application. It was just a proposal that came to me asking what I thought about it. And I told, and what I told you, that I thought that it needs a variance and council needs to concur with that particular activity in the street.
You know, one of the things I would be concerned about is I do not think in the five to ten years now, if this business is highly successful or the group of businesses they put in there, what is the opportunity for them to go ahead and cut that street on through, going back into the additional property that they own back up there? It's I understand that they, they own that property. So I can envision it, sometime in the future, this could be a very active street, different than what it is today.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I understand that. We have seen a proposal for the property behind this to be a residential subdivision. I think part of the issue with cutting this street through is the crossing of that flood plain, that creek, and the expense to that. They have talked about doing pedestrian access, but they're doing some type of vehicular access. At this point, at least, sounds like it would be not very feasible. But that's certainly something to take a look at.
And I would also think that the small businesses across the street from Men, across Men, the loan location probably would result in the highest of the best use if this becomes a very attractive area for businesses. So we'd have to think about what kind of traffic flow would be, I would think it would be torn down and something else replaced it. And I'm talking about not next year, but I'm just looking at what are we gonna be dealing with five years from now? And if, if we made that exception, so I think we ought to put that in our thought process.
And that's fine. We can, I can break this up.
Other questions, Council?
Yeah, we can go back on what you're saying, and that is true, the way the city is going right now. And the thing you did, we have to, like you said, we have to kind of futurist, see a vision, the way the city is going. And so I think if each one of us here, that makes sure we, when we agree to something, or we get something established, it's gonna be safe, that it'll be safe for the community and people who come to the city.
Mr. Wood?
And I do have one other item just to mention to you. I attended a meeting last Friday, a kickoff meeting for a Peach County T-Splast proposal. And it looks like they are moving forward to try to have a referendum on the ballot in June. Based on the information that they have put together, it looks like they have, and they base the, the allocation of funding to the, to the various cities, the county and the various cities, based on the percentage of total roads within those jurisdictions. And so based on the amount of roads that are currently in the city of Perry in Peach County, it looks like we would end up getting somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars over a five-year period. That, that funding would have to be used for transportation related activities in the portion of the city that's in Peach County. So I'll keep you updated on that. They are requesting that each council approve a resolution regarding this T-Splast referendum at their meeting, or meetings in March, although they have not agreed on it yet. So I will, I let their folks know that we need that by the eleventh, I believe, to get on through March sixteenth. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Lynn?
Nothing denies her, thank you. Nothing denies her, thank you.
Ms. Clark, any updates on three sixty-five or anything?
Not going with it, it's going well, sir.
Mr. Smart?
No, sir.
Just good, sir.
Nothing.
Just warrant anything from the city clerk's office? Ms. Clark, anything else this evening? Does any council member have anything else if they would like to bring forward? Remind everybody that our meeting tomorrow is starting five o'clock here with three councils meeting. And our regular scheduled council meeting will be at six o'clock. All of our meetings are open to the public, and we invite their interest and participation in those. If there's nothing else to come before, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second. Motion in a second. I'll invite the ladies and gentlemen to the right. We stand adjourned. So all nine is five o'clock.